Call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. I will take a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Right.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, county engineer.
All right. I got a few projects here to have final acceptance for the agreement of work and. One of them is for. Paving project, one's for a bridge. Eighty-two. That was, uh. Most recent one we did. Oh, I think we leave the road and, uh. The bridges for. It was a double box covered down on the gravel road a couple of years or a year ago or so. But all they needed to be is, is a final acceptance, we can close out the projects in. System.
Is, is there any, I mean, a motion for the certificate of completion and final acceptance of the agreement work? I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
That dated a little bit. Alan finished the paperwork and that's fine, you can, it's fine, they're just dated from last week when he finished. So you're aware of that.
Oh, yes.
Um. Last week we had, uh, my cog meeting, what's our? Meeting to turn in our S T P apps, the project we just let. Out here on Rush was an S T P project with federal aid in it. Worth County had, uh. We didn't use very much federal aid on this project, I think. Five hundred thousand. And for fiscal twenty-seven, we hell have a, a balance of about nine hundred thousand dollars. Um. So. I turned an application into new Witherwood. Um, from. Uh, one oh five south to highway nine. Um. That route is an asphalt road, uh, by twenty twenty-seven, it might be in. In need of some work. Um. It's also the interstate bypass detour. So. We put, I put an application into one point five million dollars, even though we have nine hundred thousand, our, our district allows us to. Borrow ahead and that stuff, we kind of work with ours. So, um, when all the applications were turned in last week. We still had another. I think there was another six hundred thousand dollars left to use out of the district, so I added another half a million. So now we're gonna be at two million dollars for federal aid on that project, so we'll be a million dollars in the hole, which. Isn't the first time a county's been a million dollars hole, but it's federal aid money. And. So I turned the application in for Wheeler Wood Road now. So we'll be a million dollars in the hole, so it'll be a while before we can use federal aid for any paving projects. That's, uh, gonna be about sixty-six percent. Of the total cost to do the project. So we'll have to have foreign market funds to. To balance that out. So I'm working to finalize my D O T budget program right now and. In order to have funding for that project in fiscal twenty-seven. There's some roads that we're gonna have to put on hold for the next few years in order to have enough funding. To do that project where we find other funding sources to do these roads in the meantime. So I'll give you a little heads up on that, um. Probably not next week, but, uh. The tenth, my reports do it April fifteenth, so on the tenth we'll bring the. The D O T budget and program in for approval and I'll discuss more on funding and stuff right there. The biggest thing for the D O T. Program and budget is what's gonna happen next year, so we'll have that. And then, um. So it looks pretty ugly trying to, to figure out, even, even the bridge stuff is pretty ugly when you think about only getting. A couple hundred thousand dollars a year for bridges. I'm trying to balance all that out with projects too. I programmed a lot of things, that doesn't mean we're gonna be able to do them all, but they're in there as a need. So, uh, we'll talk about that. Then too. But just wanted to give you a heads up on that funding. Um, we can always, always. Uh, once a year we get to put these applications in. And if we see a need somewhere else for that money in fiscal twenty-seven. We can always modify. The application to take that project out and put a different one in for the same funding and usually, as long as we're not. Adding funding or something else. The location doesn't matter as much and we're still far enough out that we can make modifications every year. I know one of, one oh five east is a, is a, is a target for us to do too, but. Um, and I know it's a rough road. Um. It seems as though. The asphalt roads were out a little bit faster and maybe the, maybe the fix for one oh five. Is maybe not as long term as a concrete overlay, but maybe an asphalt overlay to get us another fifteen or twenty years. Might be a little less expensive, but not as long term. Durability as concrete would be. But these other roads were done that way before we overlaid them too, so maybe we just do the intermediate step and get fifteen, twenty years out of an asphalt overlay. We'll get some ride back out of, but we don't have to discuss that and make a decision on it, but just trying to find ways to. There's, there's, you know. The upfront costs of paving and then there's the long-term costs. Of the life cycle, you know, you can spend a lot of money upfront. You can spend a little bit more money upfront doing a concrete road that's gonna last you twice as long as the cheaper upfront cost of an asphalt road. I shouldn't say cheaper, but it's less expensive to do that, but there's a little bit more. Um. We just know by experience the asphalt oxidizes, because we don't always have the money to do the proper maintenance on the, on the asphalt roads as we would like, because there's always another. Project to do with the money, so just as an F Y I, that's what we're trying to look at in. Budgeting and programming, uh, projects. Just so you're aware of that, um. Also. Um. In the next few months to a year, we're gonna have some turnover up in my office. Um, nothing's official. But I gotta start planning. So. I have made an offer to a current employee. That I think would work well up in my office. So I'm gonna swing that person up. They've agreed to the. The salary I offered. Uh, we're getting him training right away. We're gonna have to be looking for some other employees to replace that person, plus the one that resigned not long ago. Plus to replace anybody, I wanna start cross-training some people up in the office, so we're gonna have a little bit overload up the office, but we need. We need the. Experience passed down. And so we'll have some cross-training for a while, but. I've got a plan in my head. It's just gonna take a while and, and, and to try to find people advertising with, with where we're at with projects this year. Trying to advertise and wait for somebody to come in just as feasible for us. So I think. Person and I, I'll. We'll discuss that part probably next week when I get the paperwork and everything filled out. Turned it, but, um. That's just where we're at up there, it's just kind of things, just kind of all of a sudden snowballed here and. Things are happening, so we've got to start planning ahead, so.
Sure. Sounds good, yeah, sounds like good. Yeah, if you can do within and.
And somewhere else. I, I'm, I'm torn. Uh. From taking them out there and bringing them in here, but I gotta look at the advantage to us in, in all aspects, so. Uh. Think you'll learn quick, got a really good attitude, so. That's the direction we're gonna go for now, I mean, it leaves us open for. You know, any future, like I said, I'll probably advertise now. Russ hasn't, hasn't positively said, but he. It'll be in the next. Couple of years, maybe, I don't know, it, it, it could be anytime. But I need to start getting somebody trained up there to do the, the payroll, the. Time and all the other stuff that. That office manager stuff does.
Yep.
Cause then I can free him up to help. In the back, so. We're gonna be doing a lot of shuffling, we're gonna start advertising some things and. And go from there, but.
Okay.
Gonna be busy up there trying to. Reorganize the.
Space.
The space, wow, not a space, but just the personnel. To get. Keep moving, keep things fluid, so. Just an update for you, then I'll be gone after tomorrow.
Okay.
For the week.
Alright, anything else for?
We haven't made a decision yet. I mean, I should be making a decision on that motor reader here soon too, so. Still, we'll get that. Just a lot of things happening and. Sorry, the last two weeks have been kind of a nightmare, so. Getting back in the groove.
Alright, thank you, Rich. Uh. Claims. Oh, drainage, yes. I know there's a drainage claim.
I'm looking motion for the drainage claims.
I'll second it, any further discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Opposed, motion carries. Now claims. I'll second that motion. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. You have any reports?
No.
How about payroll eligibility?
Yes.
Moves it out.
Warren is gonna be verbal, I'll get a signature later. Technical difficulties. It is, um, A G Branstead is gonna be the part, part timer at. And then is one. Oh, it's from Dan.
I will take a motion on Nev Katrina Elizabeth or Katrina Elizabeth Nev. I think that's how you pronounce her last name.
Neve.
Neve, okay.
I will.
I'll second it.
And A G.
And all, and A G. Yep. I'll second that, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
If your license is spurred by Angel.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor say aye, right, aye. Opposed, motion carries. On that page.
Who's? They have to draw in.
Yep, schedule.
Well, I wouldn't think.
Next thing on the agenda is the North Iowa Regional Housing Authority with their. Payment and lieu of taxes, the pilot, the consideration of a waiver. We do this every year. It's for Friendship Village down in Manly and. Inside apartments up at north. Is there a motion to? To waive that? I'll second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye, or aye. Opposed, that motion carries. Skip on down to, um. Order points. I don't know. Maybe he's not here.
He's not here, so.
I guess.
Have you thought of anything, anybody for imminent domain yet?
No, that's what he's.
Well, it's supposed to get, no, he's. It's supposed to be a real estate.
From the count.
We haven't left.
I don't know, Chris, Chris never got back to me, so I don't know.
Maybe I'll touch base with her. I can't do.
Here on these.
Um. We'll just leave that. Melissa, are you on?
I am.
So.
Um, we, I had a P D I spring conference last week and then, um, I did find out that one of my team members that is going to be at the Rural Summit, which is a conference for, in April. Cannot go. Um, I already have paid for a team of three, which is only ten dollars more than an individual. Um, so I have a open slot for anybody that would like to, um, participate in a three-day conference and. So. And then I am going to open up, uh, tickets for the anniversary to the general public today. And sponsorship for that will end, I, the availability for sponsorship will end in a week or two, because I need to get the posters to the printer.
Sure.
Good. That is?
I think so.
You got any questions? I don't think so. Thank you, Melissa.
You bet.
Uh, EMS, continue discussion. You've got a pack today, I already think. We ought to have EMS workshop with supervisors and the mayors.
What would? What work?
Yeah, cause we want to, we need to do it before you hit the field here.
Yeah.
So maybe. Next. What don't I, we want, we wanna be in a position to. Get ahold of the mayors and find out when they're available. Probably evenings, like about seven o'clock and maybe like a. I was thinking a Wednesday, but now there's Lent, so maybe like a Thursday night then, cause most of them have meetings on Mondays and Tuesdays.
Yeah.
You wanna touch base with the mayors in your district?
Good.
I'll touch base with Northwood and. We'll send, I'll send A J a. Text. To touch base with Manley and Graff. Kind of shoot for that. First week in April sometime and then.
Correct.
Find out when they're available, we can. Well, you gotta post it twenty-four hours in advance, right?
Right.
Well, even the first or second week in there sometime.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, the weekend.
Kind of shoot for like Thursdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays.
So the thirteenth maybe.
Yep. Let's see what we can put together here.
Yeah.
We need to. We need to have, find out where, what they think and where they're headed.
Good.
With the mayors. So, um. I think it's, you got anything else for EMS?
Would you have time to trust you some?
I thought of that too, but first. Start with the mayors and if they can come, then reach out to the trustees too. Probably have it at the. E L C. I just think we ought to sit down and have a discussion, just. Workshop on it. So. Okay, we're gonna. I'll get ahold of. I'll let A J know and. And, uh. You've touched base with yours, okay?
Tried to, yeah.
Uh, budget discussion, is there any, we pretty much had that last week. Emailing back and forth, right?
Yep.
Is there anything new?
I, I just, I gave it to you by email. Nothing was.
No, nothing.
Nothing was done.
We were.
Questions. I, I did throw in.
Questions I had already emailed back to you.
I did throw in the. Three hundred whatever thousand for EMS. For twenty-four, if we do have to pay that.
In the budget?
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha, yeah. We haven't decided where we're.
No.
I keep noticing everybody says, oh, we're gonna pay for it, and it's like, no, we found a way. We couldn't. So. That's about. Yeah. Anything else on budget?
All I did, I was able to keep a hundred and fifty, I, I mean, it still doesn't make the general fund balance that spectacular, but I was able to keep the hundred and fifty in for. Building.
Perfect.
Yeah. Yeah. To try to save some money for building.
You could do that. Well, touch it. And you should be able to leave it.
But like I said, with, um, not knowing what's going on with sales tax, that makes me kind of, yeah. That makes me, cause. That's. Five hundred thousand in the budget.
This, that's not.
Yeah, that's.
They have a major decision.
That's a good chunk of the budget for rural.
Yep.
Running out of time where they just get slid to the side.
And the majority of rural.
Come next year. And then slide it again.
The majority of ru- rural is a transfer to secondary roads. That's like one point three something, so. No, snowballs.
This does. I don't have anything else on the budget.
No, I think so.
Um, Chris, with people's service, I see you're here.
Yeah.
See, I know a lot.
And you've been on top. And she hadn't reported any question? No, I didn't have any questions.
Yeah. Yeah, everything going good? So, you're strict. Yep. Well. He looked at him, he, he said, I can't find nothing wrong. It's computer, so. They're just two computers that, the ones that download the computer and tell the other one what to do. And so, you know, it's just like your personal computer, get the glitch once in a while. If all the stars align up the wrong way. You know, we're only there. Twenty minutes a day, you know, in the water plant, and then you come back in the afternoon for. A walk through, you're there for four or five minutes, you know, and everything's fine, so. Could be anything, power surge, whatever, yeah, set them off. Two computers talking to each other. There's really no warning either. No. It did about.
Cause we do have that in place.
Yeah. Look, here's reporting upon. We'll be hauling fudge here on the river, Barbara to get in there. And when we get closer to. Well, all right. Yeah. You got a feeling. Not that we're that wet.
Yeah.
It's the broth.
The stool for us and all, yeah.
It's gonna go over now again. Yep.
Good. Anything else for him, Mark?
Don't think anything.
Thank you, Chris.
No problem. Questions on three dollar.
Will do. Uh, department head discussion, any? Thing going on with you, Dan?
Uh, only thing I have, and I've just getting back from the swing after being almost last week, but April fifth, the fire alarm inspector will be here, so. Like some fire alarm setting, get set up.
Good. Any other department heads out there? Anything? Don't have anything here. Okay. Um. We'll move on to supervisor weekly. I have North Iowa Children's Alliance and, uh. We basically went over the financials like we do every month. We did lose our citizen volunteer. So we're looking for. Person to be on the board as a citizen volunteer for it. And I'm doing some looking there. We. We, we gotta come up with something. For oral health too, because. The, the one that we had high, that weren't doing that. Was backing out of it. Or they're gonna finish out the year, but you're not gonna do it again next year, so. And then I had, uh, North Iowa Long-Term Disaster Recovery Committee. And we had a very lengthy discussion. On. How we're going to finance. This on just our monthly expenses, which aren't that much. Because the four open houses didn't generate much donations. So we have to come, we got a meeting coming up in June to kind of figure that out. And Mark Thomason is your new director of that, so he was happy when I took him in. So, in other than that, I have the safety training at the O C, which I thought was very good. So that was my week.
Yeah, I had the safety training too, it was excellent. We're good, finally, finally got to have our safety training. Did a good job talking about things covered, about a lot of everything, I think, you know, all departments. Chat with him, I think he's gonna come back and do, you know, safety block through in here at some point through the whole building and through. The other, you know, kind of what I'd date, I think he just said it was a little over a year ago, since he did it. I go, we made some changes based out, some areas. So he'll probably be back, making appointments to get back around for that at some point. Um, I also had in our, uh, due a little retention meeting on Eldora. Budget, like normally we go over the budget and go over the staff reports, things like that, so they thought what's going on inside now. Still struggling with some stuff there, but building expansion wise. They're really hoping by May eighth, they can complete. Construction, really, it's, go forward, but that's still costing us money, but I don't. And. We did burn enough loan to bank fund, it's okay, you can go ahead. To a construction interest and. Get that lined up and. And get more people. So. I guess that was it, you know, like I said, in the whole county's budget for that stuff, it's. There's counties that run. Fifteen, twenty thousand dollars in market and do a lot of retention services, I mean, not a whole lot bigger sometimes, so. You know. Something to keep an eye on, not that we, if we have kids, we have to take care of it. Whole situation will stay low, I think it's gonna screw that up.
And you never know when it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
It's always sporadic.
Yeah.
Somebody's there for every day, it's three to four thousand.
Well, just, just prevent them staying, yes, it's a ticket for. Non-health reasons to the hospital and one kid who was done was ten or twelve thousand, which that's a gun expense.
And if it's mental health, that's the divide that I don't understand, cause shouldn't some of that go to mental health?
I don't know, that's probably things. Rules and all. I don't either. I don't know how you divide, I don't think you are right. Yes.
I know, Melissa before. But. Ends up not being, so.
Yeah.
Then we end up paying it, so.
Shouldn't have, almost like we'd be paying it twice in that situation, you know, if, or people are picking. But anyway, it was, it was a good meeting. You had to deal with that, and it's a little bit higher than what we're normally, I've been on that board now about five years and misses the. You've been like zero forever, which is good. I mean, it says a lot for the county, but. Got that one instance and. Didn't get out of hand, so.
Yep.
That was my week.
Okay. Um. Agenda for next week. Looks to me like everything's on. Well, in that case, we've covered everything, in that case I'll recess the regular session till nine o'clock here. Uh, it's nine o'clock, I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
I'll second it. Any, any further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The. Public hearing is now open on full group entering the general obligation urban renewal loan agreement. Up to six million dollars. Is there anybody with? Any comments? Or is there any written or oral objections to it?
And, and he's on there too, if he wants to say anything about it.
Heidi, do you have anything to say about it?
Um, just here to answer any questions, um, if any come up during the public hearing at this point.
Hey, thank you, Heidi.
We're honored.
Yeah, and you didn't.
Afterwards, we could talk next steps, things like that, so.
Yeah.
You didn't get any written objections, did you? Is, I repeat again, is there any? Buddy on Zoom with any? Comments or questions? I guess considering that there is nobody with any comments or questions, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Right.
Aye. Opposed. The public, or the public hearing is now closed. I will reconvene the regular session. Is, do you have a resolution?
Yeah.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh six. Resolution, take an additional action on proposal to enter in general obligation urban renewal loan agreement. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Worth County, Iowa, heretofore proposed entering a general obligation. Urban renewal loan agreement and to issue general obligation bonds in the principal amount not to exceed six million dollars pursuant to the provisions. Of subsection three, three, one, period four, four, one, two, B fourteen. Section three, three, one, period four, oh, two, section three, three, one, period four, four, two, and chapter four, oh, three of the Code of Iowa. For the purpose of paving. Paying the cost to the extent of undertaking aspects of the Worth County Road Bridge and Culver Improvement Projects and Ur- Urban Renewal Program of the County. Which was authorized by action of the Board of Supervisors on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. And in lieu of calling an election upon which. Upon such proposal has published notice of the proposed action. Has held a hearing hereon and as of March twenty-seven, twenty-three, no petition had been filed with the county asking that the question of entering into a loan agreement. Be submitted to the registered voters of the county and whereas it is necessary at this time to take additional action to enter into the. Be submitted to the registered voters of the county and whereas it is necessary at this time to take additional action to enter into the loan agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Worth County as follows, section one. The Board of Supervisors hereby determines to enter into the loan agreement in the future. And orders that general obligation or renewal bonds be issued at such time and evidence thereof, the board further declares that this resolution. Constitutes the additional action required by section three, thirty one, period, four, four, three, two of the code of Iowa. Section two, all resolutions or parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to extent of such conflict. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption and approval as provided by law. I will take a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty three, period, oh, six.
It's the point of expression, I guess, first. Yeah, we got a form on a resolution, that's what I thought. So I will, I will make that in.
I second it. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye, oh no, we got a roll call. Roll call, smoke, sneeze. Lober, aye. Motion carries. Resolution is adopted. I don't think there's anything else on our agenda today, so I will take a motion to adjourn. I will second it, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.
Hold on, so we can keep hiding. Everybody.
Okay.
Please.
Do you want me to um push people out?
Yeah. Well, I guess it doesn't matter, but I don't need it.
Morning. Good job reading.
I sometimes get going too fast.
It was great, well, and it's all a bunch of legal, um. You know, so it's not words that you're used to just saying in regular.